Good afternoon. I want to call the April 26, 2018 work session of the Coffee County Board of Education's Order. At this time, like Dr. Banks, we would lease an indication.
Father God, we thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity, Father God, to come together to this work session tonight. I pray, Father God, that we will do things that you will have us do in a physical manner. I also pray, God, to protect all of our children as we're coming to the near of another successful school season. I pray, Father God, that whatsoever on our students' minds, that you will touch them, that put clear thoughts into their mindset, that they will continue to excel in this particular school year. And I pray not only for that, Father, but realizing our mission, destination, graduation for college, career, and life. And I pray that everybody is continuing to work for the good of everybody, all stakeholders within our community. I pray, Father God, that you will bless all of our leaders, our board members, our superintendent, everybody within this school body, classified, incertified, even the ones who clean the buildings day in and day out. I pray, Father God, for them as well. And as we, Father God, come to the next month of May, where everything starts to happen, everything starts to get to a summative part of the school year, I pray, Father God, that you give us the conclusion that we can all say, "Well done," at the end of this year. We ask, Father God, that we be in the midst of those who are striving to do what is right. This is our prayer, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We ask it in Jesus Christ's most holy and righteous name. Amen.
Do you have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll in favor.
All right. Thank you, board members. Appreciate you being here tonight. And all of our visitors who are here tonight, thank you for coming. And we'll proceed with our business here. Board members, you'll find the minutes from our previous meeting, the March minutes. You've had a chance to read over these over the last week, read questions, edits, comments. If there's no changes that need to be made, we replace those and we can send the agenda to the regular meeting immediately following this meeting. Next item you'll see is our monthly financial report. And as part of this financial report, we're going to move right into what we're calling the budget hearing. So we will have our regular financial report, and we'll move right into a budget hearing for the development of the FY '19 budget for the Coffee County School. So first item on our monthly financial report is the March 31, end of month, fund equity. You'll see we are $15 million, 169,751.78. Any questions about that document? All right. The next document is the monthly financial comparison. Let's see if we compare the month of March 18 to the month of March 17. We have managed to operate efficiently within our current budget. There's no questions about that document. We'll move to the monthly financial report, the detailed report. Ms. Yawn, describe this document for us.
This is our detailed report of our revenues and our expenditures as of March 31, 2018. You can see that our revenues through March have been $45 million, 166,699.55. And throughout the report, you see the expenditures detailed. And as of March 31, those expenditures totaled $39 million, 372,474 cents. And that gives us our fund equity of the $15 million, 169,751.78.
Any questions about this report? We'll move on to the SPOS report. You'll see that we have March revenues notated $468,310.37. I was a little surprised that '16, we had a better March. Any questions about this report? I did go out to the Performing Arts Center today, and the steel is coming up. The stage is set and ready to be poured. It's coming together nicely. Me and Dr. Cummings, he's back in the back. We walked out on the side, toured it with the superintendent of the job out there, and it's just coming along nicely. It's really coming together now. So it will be a nice addition to our school system. Also, the Nichols Elementary School project is progressing, finishing up the demolition and removal of the old school in the back. The berms are being set in the back to separate the school from the railroad tracks and provide a barrier between the tracks and the school for noise purposes and other reasons that the state required us to put those up behind the school. And we also have the, what's the other project going on, Michael? And then we've got the Nichols School, we've got the Performing Arts Center. And we're going to talk about the transportation field that's on the agenda. And then the HVAC, the HVAC at Coffee High School is out for bid right now. So Architect has been, had a pre-construction meeting with interested contractors. And those bids will be coming back in over the next couple of weeks. Also, safety improvements at Coffee High School will be part of that. We've met with Dr. Cummings and his staff at the high school, and the architect developed plans to enclose the main entryway to the school, and there'll be safety doors, and you'll have to be buzzed in, much like we've got at some of the other sites where you're buzzed in or you can't get in certain areas. We'll have that technology at Coffee High School by the end of this summer and provide a much safer entryway, security doors at Coffee High School as part of that innovation. Those are a few of the SPOS funded activities we have going on. And I'd like to thank our voters for supporting SPOS. Without SPOS, we could not do that kind of work. So thank you. We'll place those reports on the agenda for a regular monthly meeting. Now we'll move into our budget hearing. Ms. Yawn, our interim comptroller has prepared a notebook for each one of you with the calendar. And the calendar timeline, you will see, begins the budgeting process. We have carried out the February activities, board retreat, which we presented you all the findings from the staffing meetings through the March. We talked about local and state revenues, expenditures, April 26. This is our public hearing, and we'll report to the board the revenues and expenditures. I do need to talk to the board about our schedule moving forward. On May 8, we'll have another public hearing at our next board meeting on our budget. And then we will need to have a board meeting, a called board meeting, after we advertise the tentative budget for two weeks. So at the end of May or early June, we will need to have a called board meeting. The dates that we've circled are May 30 at noon possibly, May 31 at noon, or June 6 at We'll be, yes, we will be leaving that Wednesday. You're right. We could, we could meet in the morning. June 6. I can't do the 4 or 5. How about the 30 or 31? Does that work for any of y'all? Y'all will look at it and get back together?
I'd look, sleep.
All right. We'll get back together on it, but 30, 31 would work. Great. All right. Now moving into the budget. Tracy, do you want to describe the revenue for us as well here?
Yes, sir. What we're looking at here is our revenue projections for fiscal year 2019. And I'm showing here the FY 2018 budget, and then also the FY 2018 projected, where we are through this year. And then the last column is your FY 2019 projected budget. For the local revenues, I'm budgeting fairly compared to what it was as the budget was 2018. Remain pretty much the same, with a slight increase for the projected 2018, where we look at. And if you look on through our local revenues, we're going to remain the same as we were in the budget for 2018.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
I know I was, I was at some meetings with the School for Association, and the new legislation on the T A B T percentage that we get, are you just leaving it?
I'm leaving it flat. I spoke with the county, and they advised me that we would probably see an increase, but it has not been implemented, so I was just going to leave it flat. When you look at the state revenue, you see here that our earnings from our QBE will be up approximately $1.9 million over the budget for FY '18. You also notice that there is no austerity in the FY '19 projected budget. So overall, the QBE funding will increase approximately $2.6 million here. And that is largely caused by the TRS piece, the increase in the employer rate, the TRS, and some FTEs that were on. If you follow through, the other state grants that we see here is our equalization. This has decreased slightly. Our charter system funding has went up slightly. So overall there, we're also going to, for the other state grants, we're going to kind of remain the same except for those two. And then the federal grants, I'm budgeting the same as we did in 2018.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Can I back up just a second? Is the, is the equalization grant final?
That is on the last unofficial allotment that we received, so that's official.
Okay. So it's not, that won't change.
And you notice that's a big dollar amount. The equalization is very important to us. And that is figured through the tax digest, and they're taking the counties and the state, and they rank order based on earnings from the tax digest. And you look at all our property values and relations in the tax digest, makes us a poor county because of our property values. We don't have interstate coming through Coffee County. We don't have lakes where people have vacation homes. We don't have mountains where people have vacation homes. And we don't have coast where people have condominiums on the ocean. So our property values, when you compare them to other parts of the state, we don't bring in the tax revenue off local property taxes that some other places do. Therefore, we qualify for equalization. If you look, that's $7 million, over $7 million. So it's a transfer.
So our projected FY '19 revenue, we're looking at $66 million, 316,317. So that would be an increase over the projected '18 budget of $2.3 million there.
Any questions about the revenue? I think it is worth pointing out that that revenue piece, the state did put in the money to cover the increase in TRS. So that is, that is in there.
Now we're moving on to our expenditures. This is a bulleted list of items that are in the FY '18 projected budget, summarization of those items. And the TRS is a large piece of that. FY '19, the employer rate will be 20.9%. And FY '18, that rate, employer rate, is 16.81%. So that's a 4%, over 4% increase in TRS.
We have to pay on each and every one of those TRS holder.
The next item is our salaries. We've included in the budget salary schedules that were adjusted to reflect the 1% '18 supplement that was given to all employees. Then the certified steeps for the certified employees, classified steeps for all classified employees, the added step for 23 years of experience for the certified, and added step for 23 years of experience also for the classified. Bus drivers, a $12 an hour for the time over their initial three hours. Currently, that's at $10 an hour. And then the positions that were needed based on all the staffing meetings. And security, security services for the schools has been added, and also software and the applications have been added for security.
Tracy, where in the, where in the projections have you added the security piece? This is we get to, or are you going to go through that? Are you going to go through that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll wait.
Any questions on that? Does everybody have, those are things that have been added to the budget for the coming
The next piece that is in your book is the salary schedule with a 1% decrease for the certified. So this would be the Coffee County salary schedule, and it's got the 23 years of experience added as a staff. Then what you see is your detail of your budget for 2019. You'll see the projected breakdown compared to the original budget that was adopted in This, the first, is your instructional function. And as we see there, we're increasing that. It's going to be increased by about $2 million. And if you look about in the middle of the page, you'll see the Teachers Retirement System of Georgia. That is a huge piece of that increase there. There also is your salaries that we discussed on the bulleted list. And then you also have some operational costs that fluctuate based on the needs in schools.
Teacher retirement, state F, or is to me, or is to me in it?
Yes, sir. Move on to the second page. This is your people services. This is the function where we have added the security services, and also the technology needed for the security. The software and the app has been added here.
We've got $460,000 on the budget for security.
Yes, sir.
What you say was added to that? That total for security, that the software?
Okay. The $460,000, that's for your security officers?
Just personnel.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're putting that in there because we know we're going to, we're going to do something by the fall to have more security personnel out in the schools. And we're having to find out exactly where we're putting money in the budget to do that.
And the additional technology of the $79,000, that covers the software packages that involve and the applications that involve there, the software.
Should we slate it?
Yes, sir.
We've got two or three $20,000 dollars at the top.
Oh, that is the additional parking attendant for security at the high school?
I don't know. Just ladies, very professionals.
Yeah, that's, that would be how we would code that employee.
And that's for security?
Yes, sir.
As far as, as far as security at the high school?
Yeah, they've requested somebody to help monitor the parking lot, so we're putting that in for later.
And I think we've got, I'm going to say a couple new board members, but Mr. Jowers has been through this several times, Mr. La has, I have. As we add personnel in other functions, we also have to account for health insurance piece and teacher retirement. So there's additional health insurance and teacher retirement on this page as well. So that number from the front page was just teachers. It didn't include administrative staff. There's not any other, anybody else there. It's TRS, of course, all part of health insurance.
Clerical out of, getting back to the top?
Clerical.
Increase?
There, well, there's a decrease in the secretarial, so that is coding. You know, the duties out at the schools, if they, you know, payroll, they were coded because the other one went down by 20. So it's how they hired the new employee and their pay.
So it went down, so they were able to spend more?
Well, they replaced, and they, I'm sure they replaced that employee that was that, that left. And they, the new employee, they, it was coded as a clerical employee.
Just go down the line and explain these to me. You got a school psychologist way up $21,000 there, social worker at $27,000?
Okay, so, okay, we added, we're going to keep the school psychologist. We were currently up at two.
We've been contracting with another one because we're short.
And we should know we've added a psychologist because the current psychologist that we had past year had to leave the team. Director of Special Services.
Yeah, Director of Special Services was a, or Director of Special Ed.
Special Ed.
Yeah. Who was that? Dr. Tanya Nelson. Does that take care of the social worker part, or are we adding one of those?
The social worker is actually the employee from the county, the 4H.
That's what I was.
Yes, sir.
That's what I was. What's the 4H down there? That's all over?
We pay, each year we give them a stipend.
4H?
So the total there of the increase will be around $630,000 in people services. The next functional category is your improvement of instructional services. Here, we have an increase of around $280,000. And again, this is, you see the TRS piece is a large piece. And also, the other piece was mentioned in the previous function. This is where the Director of Special Ed and Director of Special Services have paid out of this function year. So that's where you see that.
That $109,000?
Yes, sir.
Is that two people or?
That's several people. Well, that's.
Seven.
Yes, that total, yes, that's several in that category. That's just, yes, more than.
One other, other man in the front row?
Any other questions in this category?
Okay, the next category is your media services. This one, we've actually seen a reduction of approximately $18,000. There's some adjustments here in health. Now this, you know, this could change throughout here, but this is how, as it is now at this time. And also, there were some retirements and resignations, which resulted in some new hires. So with the change in salaries and staff, this is where we work this budget. Move on to our general administration. Here you mainly see the increase of the TRS piece. And the next category is our school administration. This is an increase of approximately $83,000. And again, we have, you know, TRS, and we've had several, you know, resignations and retirements that resulted in, you know, some change in personnel that caused the fluctuation in The next category is your support services. And here's an increase of approximately $16,000. The majority of that is your. The majority of that is your, the teacher's retirement here. The next is maintenance and operations. We'll be increasing that approximately a hundred and fifty thousand. We have added some funds for supplies, maintenance, and repairs this budget, as well as there has been some retirement in the custodial personnel and from Coffee County schools. So they've moved over now to the American Facility category. So they would be budgeted under those contracted services. So that's, there's a shift in the funding there. The next category is our transportation. Showing an increase of approximately a hundred and twenty-six thousand here. This contains the addition of the twelve dollars an hour above the initial three, three hours, as well as some additional funding for supplies, maintenance, and repairs.
One of the things we have talked about with the Director of Transportation is, is the difficulty in finding bus drivers. People who can drive. It's a challenge if you drive through any town now, you'll see buses out by the road. You'll want to sign on. You'll experience the same difficulty here finding drivers. So, Mr. Giger has talked, Ms. Yawn and myself, about possibly some sort of incentive to keep the drivers on the bus of good attendance incentive of some sort. He has talked with another transportation director, number two systems, where they may give a cash amount for perfect attendance for a year. Just be back, it has been effective, that keep the drivers on the road. They know they're gonna get a cash incentive at the end of the year if they don't miss any few days. So, talking with Ms. Yawn and Mr. Giger, what we've worked out. You basically do that without adding anything to the budget. Just move some funding out of one category into another and possibly try that with the drivers. But I didn't want to just mention that to the board. I don't have a proposal here tonight, but I know that's been a challenge.
That's correct.
Are you saying that that proposed, or you all just been talking to them?
We've talked about it. I didn't come here prepared to make a proposal tonight, but I didn't want to mention it to you. It's something that we have discussed.
Do you have something for us by the next meeting? It's only a couple weeks away.
And you say that would not be included in the budget?
Well, it, it wouldn't really add to it. We don't anticipate, cause it right now, how many, how many drivers had perfect attendance?
Uh, to the vague four.
All right, so, you know, maybe that could help make that better for next year.
Did you give them any incentive before?
No, man, we ain't through the school year yet.
Well, have you planned it?
No, man, I'm up this year, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward for next year. Yeah.
Your drivers okay with that? We not gonna lose them because we're waiting?
Moving on to the last category is our support services. Showing an increase of approximately twenty-five thousand largely because of your teacher retirement here. Adjusting some salaries and some of the supply items here. So if they projected FY nineteen budget is six million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. In comparison to the revenue, we're showing a deficit of two hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. For fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, not seventeen, the fund balance we ended with was the nine million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. When we budgeted FY eighteen, we were budgeting a surplus for eighteen of three hundred and sixty-three thousand. So we're still, you know, moving in that direction where there will be a surplus that we will end this fiscal year in, June third, two thousand and eighteen.
If you remember, we did come back in November and give every employee a dollar amount in check, so. I will add that I, I did meet with our nurses today, and spoke with our nurses, and, and took some notes in my meeting, and I did just want to mention it to the board, that, that I met with them, and they shared with me some concerns about their pay being much less than nurses in comparable situations in other places. One of the nurses cited to me that she calculated her salary was eight dollars an hour. And then, another comment was that probably the one that was the most important appeared to be was that nurses come to us, if they've spent twenty years in the hospital. We, we give them credit for five years of service, regardless of how many years of service that they've had. And they do a lot outside of normal school nurses, what they shared with me. But I think the not being paid for experience was the biggest piece that, that their, their biggest concern was. So, I just, you know, I, I shared with them, we have a retirement and such, but it was concerned about the wages. So I'm sharing with the board, and we can have further conversations. I didn't want to share that.
Did they have suggestions? Did you take suggestions or portage warnings?
I think the years of service was the biggest piece that they, they could consider that, and we could consider that.
Does that go toward TRS, or goes toward just?
It's the salary, that's what their position is, it's the salary. They're not as concerned about the TRS, cause like they told me, if they can't afford to stay in the job, then, then they never gonna get to the TRS piece. And that, that's the concern, that the nursing field is so competitive that, that there's lots of opportunity to make a good deal more money. And that, you know, and in a competitive environment, that's fine, and that's what I shared with them. If you can make a whole lot more money, you might wanna go do that. I mean, honestly, that's, that's economics. But we would like to keep our good nurses if we can, and the turnover has been, we've had a lot of turnover in our nursing staff. And so, and that's the big concern also, that these nurses do care about and love the kids, but they just can't afford to keep the job. So, so I wanted to bring your attention. Okay, that'd be something we discussed when we first arrived? Yes. All right, is there anything else about budget?
Fourth and ninth?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. This was, we've got, may, may, there will be another budget here, so.
Please, now, I have a whole question on your form, Mayor Stafford.
Yes, sir.
Didn't we tell you we changed the number?
Yes, that, I don't know if it's reflected in here, cause Ms. Yawn just, she just took the, she took the charts that we were working off of when we did this, but that will be changed. Great point, Mr. Jowers, I appreciate you pointing that out. We're gonna, on our federal programs chart, when we did staffing, in the past years for fourth and fifth grade and the elementary grades, we used what the state allowed us to use, which is thirty-one. And we're gonna roll that back, make a commitment here in Coffee County to roll that thirty-one back to twenty-eight, which means we will not exceed twenty-eight in any fourth or fifth grade classroom. If we do, we'll hire a teacher to, to lower that class size. So the board, our retreat that we had, it's been a couple months ago, we talked about that, and ensuring that we don't exceed twenty-eight in classroom grades four to five. So, thank you, Ms. Jowers, is that, is that covered? If there's nothing else for budget hearing, that will conclude our budget hearing for tonight, and we will move on to the out-of-state travel. You'll see the list of out-of-state travel that we have. We have a group from Indian Creek, fourth graders going to Jacksonville Museum of Science and History. We have the NDROTC going to Palm Coast Competition. We have Coffee High School Drama Group going to the Museum of Times Union Center in Jacksonville. And then we have the Indian Creek Math Team going to the national level math competition. And we're excited about that group competing on the national stage. And I will point out that Indian Creek's math team is something that was just started by their school. It was just something that they decided to start on their own and develop their own math team. We didn't provide any additional funding for them to have this math team or anything like that. That was just something that the principal did. And I've been talking with Ms. Morgan, and she's here tonight, and excited about sending her math team to this national competition in Birmingham. And we've talked about the cost of sending this group. And they're gonna have to, you want to provide any detail on that, Ms. Morgan?
Sure, I'll be happy to. You want me to step up there?
Yeah, you can have the grab, she'll go to the, go to the podium.
We're so excited. As you said, this is a newly formed team under, under the direction of Ms. Shay Hair. Just in, in an attempt to try to promote, because math, you know, sometimes seems to be not the interest of a lot of students. But we found that, it started with the math team, the math club, that it was a lot of interest. And we started out with forty or fifty students, and as you can see in this picture, this is our fourth and fifth grade. And they actually competed, it started out, we just come across an email, and we were like, yes. I mean, we have a math club trying to generate that excitement. Shay Hair and some of the other teachers would need like one once or twice a week, and they would work with the children, and they would have different types of math activities and whatnot. And so anyway, we come across the email that there was a math competition in Macon. And so we entered, and here's some pictures, you can see the children working after school. And they work an hour after school. And, you know, just like Dr. Lee said, it's not with any pay, they just do it, the teachers do it because they wanna help the children learn. And the kids do it just because they wanna be there. So anyway, we come across the email, and the children competed in Macon, and they won. And then we had another opportunity to compete in Savannah, and again, they won. And all of the students, all of the fourth and fifth grade students. And then we competed in Atlanta, and once again, the third time, we won. And so now we have the awesome opportunity to go to Birmingham, Alabama. The competition is May the nineteenth. We will have to leave, we talked about staying part of the school day, and we'll leave around twelve or twelve-thirty on that Friday, and we'll travel, and we'll have the hotel accommodations. And then the competition will be all day on Saturday. And we thought that we may have to spend Saturday night, but we checked, and the competition shouldn't end about four o'clock, so we're thinking that we won't have to have that extra night to stay, that we can just get, come on back. It'll be late Saturday night, but we are saving. And here's, here's the projected expenses there. Five hundred and twelve dollars for the bus driver. That's for the Friday and the Saturday. The mileage, approximately six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And we have the registration fee, which is twenty-five dollars, and we do have twenty-one students, and that's our fourth and fifth graders who will be going. Hotel is relatively around a hundred and eighty dollars to two hundred dollars a night. We may not have to have the five rooms, but we budgeted that, and that'll be around a thousand. Then we'll have our meals, because we'll pay for the Friday evening meal. The breakfast will be provided by the hotel, so that'll be a free breakfast. We'll have to have lunch at the competition, and you know, anytime you go anywhere, they charge like a standard fee. It has been running about eleven dollars per child. So that's the Saturday lunch for three hundred dollars, and then the Saturday evening meal. So that'll be four hundred dollars, and all of that approximately will cost three thousand five hundred dollars. We have been doing some fundraising, we've been selling pickles and cupcakes, and we've sent out a letter to some of the businesses. So I feel really confident that we will raise at least fifteen hundred dollars on our own. And so we, I'm here to ask that if you all would at least match that, or if you are feeling generous, we will take, take as much as you will give, but the children are so excited about this triad. We've had children who competed to miss cheerleading competitions, to miss ball tournaments on, because they wanted to compete in the math competition. So we're just so excited about it, this is the first time, we're not only representing Indian Creek, we are representing Coffee County, and we're just so excited and can't hardly wait to do that. So we would appreciate any of your support that you could give us. Chicks, cash, coins, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Have anything, I don't guess policy-wise that it says about these national competitions, but we have tried to make a point in the past, I think, to, if we have our students competing at a national level, that's a big enough deal, that's a big enough, you know, event. It looks good on Coffee County. We've got people at a national level, we have tried to, you know, go in there and help them out, so that, you know, share their expenses on there. You'd like to see us try to do it with these kids.
So you're not asking for three thousand, you're asking for fifteen hundred?
Yes, ma'am. Because we wanted to raise on our own. But we will take as much as we will. Well, that's the approximate cost, and, and of course, if we have anything left over, we will bank it for next year, because we are gonna definitely continue the math club for next year. So, but, yes, ma'am, that's our projected cost.
If you're thinking of thirty-five hundred, what's gonna cost y'all, Tony?
Yes, sir, that's what we're thinking.
I'd like to see if whatever they don't raise, maybe cover the difference.
Yeah, up to, maybe put a limit, just so we know.
Up to fifteen hundred dollars.
I mean, if they raise, I mean, if they need thirty-five hundred, and they only raise twelve fifty, we need to kick in the balance. I mean, is that what you're asking, that's right?
That's right, just, I mean, you know.
I mean, if they raise two thousand, we kick in a thousand.
I was gonna say, we made up the difference, say up to two thousand.
And I'm not even taking that out of my campaign.
And Sid's a board member, so that's.
Well, that's why I, 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 I.
I didn't even say that should've been checked in for us.
No, we can figure out whatever the board wants, but this is something I think that we do need to have a board recommendation on, because it, you know, it's just.
You need it tonight, the recommendation or?
Where are you going?
Going to May.
Um, we're not going till the eighteenth, but you know, we're, we're paying hotels, go ahead and get that, and everything set up, and we, you know, so.
Have you heard from any businesses?
Oh, yes, ma'am, we've already had some donations from businesses.
Well, I already mean that all she doesn't get, we give it to her. Well, there's three of fifteen hundred.
So can we put that in the form of a motion?
Our for motion, that we give her what she need to make the trip.
We want to do this for a position. Yeah, we can, we can put that on, we can do it.
Well, we, I mean, we could, we could do it either way, just put it on the sale.
All right, all right, but we'll fund the, whatever the fifteen of. We'll fund what.
Whatever she can.
The motion is to put on the consent agenda that we will fund up to fifteen hundred dollars.
That's not what I said.
All right, what'd you say, Ms. Johnson, tell me what you said.
I said we will fund what she needed. Our for motion that we fund what she need. It could be five hundred.
All right, so we go with Ms. Johnson.
She'll be raising it, I'll say.
All right, we got a motion and a secondary discussion on the proposed, I'll match, I don't wanna say match funds, but to include funding up to her expenses that she does raise.
All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
All in favor? Any votes? Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Thanks, ma'am.
Appreciate what you're doing with those kids. Appreciate what you're doing with those kids.
Out-of-state travel, we'll place that on the consent agenda with that amendment there. Thank you.
Question?
Yes, sir.
NJROTC, are we paying for theirs?
It's a competition, yes, sir, that we recognize, high school competition.
We paying all of theirs?
We do receive some reimbursements from that.
You did give some up.
We do, I have to check to see how much we receive on the...
There's some other national competitions, too. We can give five thousand dollars and stuff towards, and some bigger ones.
Well, we consider that to be a GHSA-type competition. It's like a Georgia High School Association competition, or a competition for one of our high school teams we pay for. The idea is those competitions are required as part of us can even lead. All right, good question, Karen. All right, Chromebook purchase. We've got them. Last month, Dr. Newell presented the grant funding. He's come back with his bids and tabulations and bids. Dr. Newell, you want to take it?
All right, I think back in January, I presented to the board that we had been awarded eighty-four thousand eight hundred dollars in round five of the connections for classrooms grant. This is from the governor's office of student achievement. We've been fortunate to receive funding for several years from this. Not quite as much this year, but we're thankful to have it. So if you guys gave me the green light, go ahead and accept the grant. We've put out a bid. We had nineteen proposals submitted, and they were very competitive, as you can see. The lowest bidder was a company out of California called SciTech. Very limited references on the East Coast, but I did call five of those. Could not find any school districts in Georgia that they dealt with. They do not have customer service available for us until noon Eastern time. So based on all of my due diligence and checking, I want to make a recommendation that we go with the second lowest bidder, Harry Jones. The difference is about 2.4 percent in the cost per Chromebook. We have vendor, this is a vendor that we've dealt with in the past. We bought from them almost exclusively for the last year. They deliver using their own vehicles. They provide on-site service, so their technicians are under warranty. So thanks for customer service, we've had no trouble with them at all in the past. And as you see there, they came in at two oh nine thirty-five each. This is a brand-new bottle of Chromebook, just released in March. So it has about a five-year life expectancy on Google. We would need to pay for this, general front, fund upfront, and apply for reimbursement through the grant. So we would need to pay for that and probably get that back. Along with each one, there is a home management license that is required to manage these on our network. Harry Jones also came in with a low bid on that at twenty-three hundred, twenty cents each. And that would give double just. So this is my recommendation, that the board approve this vendor selection and proceed with that. These devices, three hundred will be going to Coffey High, and a hundred and five will be going to freshman campus. This will get them a lot closer to the one initiative that we have in the lower grades. And I'd like to go ahead and get these on the way. They purchased the carts locally already, they're storing in, like, in charging carts. So if you get them in and get them to the schools before noon, you know, they can go ahead and have those set up for first of the year. Ask me to approve the vendor selection.
The motion, what would we place on the consent agenda, if I could start, if you're the board? Next item on the agenda is Kenvold. And with this piece, it's a attendance improvement system. And you'll see the total amount is, for the implementations, forty-five thousand. And if you go to the presentation about what is it, and of course, I think, well, start with why. Why do we feel like we need it? If you look at the problems that we have with attendance, that's the why. Attendance-related issues that we have, younger students that don't come to school, older students that don't come to school, we've got parents that won't send their kids to school. And so the idea is to have a program or a system that will help us get more kids to school. You'll scroll down, Dr. Newell. This system has been working in schools, Washington DC, New York, North Dakota, different school systems have used it, and it's working. You can go to the next slide. Some of the problems associated with attendance is unreliable attendance data. It's just hard to wrap your hands around attendance data at times in school. So I've been in three different systems, and in three different systems, it seems like it's a challenge to wrap your hands around all the attendance data and make usable reports and get parents and social workers and other folks notified every time they matter. Next slide. So with this system, we will be talking about strategic coaching. And I think we're messed up here, James. All right, strategic coaching, community summits, and attendance and communication software. And also includes robo-calls, messaging, two-way messaging through text. So we feel like this piece will really help us. It's founded by teachers. And this slide kind of sums it up, that the system, we use our current student information system right there. That's Infinite Campus, and it'll pull the information from Infinite Campus. And then it'll drop it into the Kenvold operating system. And then our teachers will get reports on a dashboard. Our parents will get text messages and emails and robo-calls. And then our teachers and our administrators and social workers will have reports on a daily basis on attendance. It's easy to use and easy to read and understand. So we think this can really help us with our efforts to try to get students in school. Next slide. We'll have community summits, teacher and leader coaching, and attendance management web, including a mobile app. Go to the next slide. And this piece, you click on that, and it gives you an idea of the dashboard. Did you see that?
Welcome to Kenvold, your district's attendance headquarters. Attendance records are imported from Skyward. That means the teachers do not have to change behavior or routines in regards to...
You can kill video, James, but leave that slide on. But if you look at that, the part right there are the students who are missing five to nine days. And when you click on that, it's gonna pop up and populate the screen with the students who are missing five to nine days. If you go to the next area on the pyramid, it's gonna show you the students who are missing from ten to nineteen days. And then at the very top, you can't see it on here, but there's another part of the pyramid you'll click on, and it'll show you the students who are missing more than twenty days. And it's gonna automatically text message the parents and automatically text message the social workers. If a student doesn't show up, the third block at the high school, the parents are gonna get a text. Student doesn't show up, the first period, the parents are gonna get a text. For our most at-risk students, we'll plug it up where our social workers will get a text. And that way, that social worker knows that morning, go contact those parents. So we really think this piece can help us get a handle on attendance. Our business, the community, is to ask us to do something about attendance. We'll pay for this with federal funds. It won't be general funds or state funds. We've got the federal funding to be able to pay for it. Dr. Victor, did you have any comments about it? I know your social workers looked at it.
Right, they have looked at it, and they're very excited about this product. They spend an awful lot of time trying to monitor student attendance, making phone calls, doing home visits. And they're really thinking that with this two-way communication that's automatically generated and sent out to the parent, it will notify parents of kids that aren't in school, that the parent thinks that the child left my house and went to school, but they didn't show up. So that gives them an avenue to find out, you know, what's going on with that child. But it also kind of narrows down the focus, so that, like Dr. Lee said, when you look at that pyramid, they're focusing on the extreme cases and not all of these in between. Right now, they're trying to dedicate a certain amount of time each week to do that. But it is a never-ending process. And we really think that this program will give us the data we need much quicker so that they can go ahead and start working on those cases before they get too far gone, really.
Questions? Yes.
Where does this program get its information from?
It'll pull it from our information system.
That we already got.
That we already got.
Oh, we need the program.
It's our information system, when you try to pull it in...
We're getting a program that's gonna use what we done got.
You have to go into our current information system and pull reports from it, and it just doesn't generate the reports as quickly as this will give it to us immediately.
Let me share. When I was in the office, you put the attendance in daily. But then our program was, that we had, what he's talking about, you gotta gather all that data. You got to gather the data for the ones who had ten or more days. You had to gather, summarize it. And then you had to take time to do the letters and send them out, the casework. What, it seemed to be that the system doesn't accept, once you put the attendance in there. You don't have, I don't have to go back and say, okay, it's the twentieth day, let me see how many children have missed twenty. Let me run that report. You had to run a report of everything, ten-day, five-day, twenty-day. Then you had to get it out, set up appointments for them to come in, see the counselor or whoever the social worker was. That was what your other duties. And I'm sure this, the people who are doing it now, this was their other duties. But what you're saying is that this report would get the information from your attendance and readily get it to the people who need it.
Yes, ma'am.
They don't already get that from that for the campus?
It's just off-world. It's set to generate a report on the trigger if they reach a certain threshold for absences. It generates a letter. That letter, a notification...
It mails the letter.
Then you mail the letter.
Who mails the letter?
It will come from the school. By the time the letter arrives home, that's...
We get a general answer, we still got a letter, you can mail it.
That's in the current system.
Then follow the...
That's in the...
Look, Karen, let me ask a question. If Dr. Victor can answer, or anybody can answer. So currently, the lag time between the time our reporting is done and communication goes after the parent is roughly what?
It depends, case by case.
But not same day, unless somebody actively takes the phone and tries to reach that parent?
Well, not necessarily. Because if they're a campus portal parent, they get a push notification that their child's absent. So if they use that app.
I've been some schools, yeah.
So where, I guess where I'm going with this is, I think in this day and age, there's so many different ways that people are comfortable being communicated with, that they lock into the way that they want to be communicated with. And this app will help, well, it'll text, it'll instant, it'll message, it'll... There's various ways they could be communicated with that would be same day.
Right, from what I understand, it will give us documentation that we can actually use and take it for as far as contacts, because it will show if that message made it to that parent and if they replied back to that message. And that's what we're thinking. It will cut down on the time the social workers are involved in all the phone calls and the home visits, and will give them more opportunity to actually spend their time on mental health issues that we're desperately needing.
Dr. Cummins, you had made comments when we had the presentation about the period attendance at the high school.
Yes, sir, we're four-by-four blocks. So in the high school, unlike elementary schools, a powerful piece to me with this software, it will instantly call and contact the parent. Because ours is block by block. And so if Mr. Curtis comes to my class, misses my class, once I put in the attendance, this extracts that information from Infinite Campus and immediately contacts the parent. So to ask Mr. Pressus' question, there'd be very little lag time between that. And so in high school, we're period by period, we're not by day.
That's if you put it in right then.
Yes, yes, sir.
You don't wait.
The teachers are required within the first fifteen minutes to input the attendance. And then it immediately, this program will understand, will pull that from the attendance and contact you.
It'll pull every ten minutes at school, every time.
How many systems in Georgia's on this? I didn't hear you mention Georgia earlier.
I'm working with some systems in Atlanta. It's a relatively new company, about two years in, I think.
I see it as a layer, an additional layer of school security, because we know immediately if someone's supposed to be at school, and we maybe get contacted by someone who says they're supposed to be at school, I don't know what's going on. You know, I just...
And one of the examples on one of the videos, the parent was called immediately, and she immediately called her daughter and said, why aren't you in class? And then within five minutes, that child's in class. That's on one of those videos. Another piece, though, that we haven't mentioned is that it will house all of the text messaging communication between teachers and parents. And that'll be an avenue that they no longer have to go get these free apps, like Remind 101 or some of these other apps that you can get to communicate with your parents. It'll all be housed in this system. Teachers, all the traffic will be...
It'll be archived.
Yes, yes.
Right now, we have no idea what's going on with Remind 101. We have no way of retrieving it, we have no way of documenting.
To me, that was one of the big safety features of this program, in addition to the attendance.
It'll also replace our current shout point, our messaging system we use. And we have severe weather days, any other reason we need to do a robo-call. This will do that for us, and we can drop that until we're using it.
And this is federal funds?
Yes, sir.
Title money, or what's...
It's foreign time, yes.
Is it taking away from anything we're doing currently, is it shipped money here?
No, because like Jan said, we won't purchase shout point, you know, and it's not the same amount of money, but we can use parent bond funds, yes.
Where'd that money come from, that federal money?
I don't know, you'll pay you.
That you have no control of.
And we don't need it, somebody else will.
Well, that was...
There will be an offset spending on shout point, just like... Was it around eight thousand?
About, maybe seven hundred.
How long we locked in for on this? One year at a time?
Not one year at a time. Which, you know, they're gonna, what we're doing, we'll go ahead and roll it out now and have it for next year. So a fund purchase will start to roll out now. All right. And remember, I said, start with the why. When we had a business and industry meeting about two months ago, we had about fifteen business owners and industries here in this room. Their number-one request from us was get kids in school and teach them to come to school. They said, they don't care what else you teach them, teach them to come to school and come to work.
And help them at home.
That's right.
Go accomplish that. Go put that one on the consent.
It wasn't on there, Jim. Strategic plan approval. The next item we have is the strategic plan. Dr. Victor?
Good evening. I just wanted to remind you about the strategic plan and about the whole process of strategic planning. We've been on a journey the last couple of years with our strategic planning. And over the last year, we've actually brought in the community, brought in stakeholders, developed a strategic plan. We, this was the end of our five-year charter, which we re-did, and we're up for a new five-year charter starting next year. So this new strategic plan starts next year. And it will, this year is the end of this strategic plan. And like Dr. Bank said, job well done. This has served us well, and we can say that it was a job well done. We learned a lot from this. And from this one... And from this one, we developed a new one. And I presented this to you last board meeting for your review. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it. Chan, if you'll scroll to this page for just a second. I just want to kind of remind you of some of the things. We came up with a new vision. We actually just added creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student. That's very important to us. And you see that infused in all of the focus areas that we have. For example, the four focus areas are teaching and learning, workforce and life, people and culture, and family and community. All the things that you talked about throughout this board meeting. We've talked to those community members. We've looked at what's important to them. And you can see on the chart, these are the areas that they suggested go under each one of those focus areas. And when you think about teaching and learning, we state that we will prepare students with strong academic and technical skill foundations. That's what the public told us they wanted. Under workforce and life, we will purposely prepare our students with the skills to navigate life beyond graduation. We've got the strategies in place under there to do that. For people and culture, we will provide a welcoming environment and positive culture for our students and our employees. That's important to us. We've got strategies under that category. Family and community, we will engage family, community members, and civic organizations as active partners. And if you scroll down just a little bit, Chan, even though we have four focus areas, we have a fifth focus area, too, that's kind of infused across, and you talked about that tonight with the budget. We will develop and manage resources to maximize student achievement. It's all about student achievement. So we make sure that we do that. And hopefully, like I said, you've had a chance to review this and look at all the areas that we've broken down. And this is, again, just the need of it. Once we get your approval, which I'm asking for tonight, we will send it to a developer, a creator, to make it look nice like this. It'll be printed just like this. And we hope to start the school year off with something just like this. Doctor Lee, you want to say anything?
No. I'd just like to thank Doctor Fair. She has worked extremely hard over the last eight months to prepare this plan. Thank you, Doctor Fair. I'd like to thank all of our staff and stakeholders who've been part of it. Roughly seventy-five people came to the meeting, the first big meeting, and then we've met students all over the county since, having students.
And we recognize that in the plan.
Yes, ma'am. So a lot of business partners, school board members been involved. It's been a community effort, and we really believe this plan is going to transform our school system over the next five years and propel us to be on the best in the state, period. That's our goal. And I'm excited to look back at the economics of what's going on in the state. Unemployment rate, industry growing. I think we got a chance to move off the county to the state, so. This is a bigger plan. Surplus property. We have a couple of buses that we have scavenged the parts off of to the point where we can't get any more parts off of them. And is that true, Mr. Giger?
That's very true, yes, sir.
All right. So I like that word that we used, that we've scavenged them. And so we're asking the board to approve these two buses to be placed on the surplus property list. Any questions, board members? Intergovernmental agreement. We've got the intergovernmental agreement between us and Wiregrass Technical College and the technical college system of Georgia. Our attorney, Cottinham, has been working diligently on this over the past few months in coordination with the technical college system and our staff. The agreement is ready to be signed and approved by the board. Mr. Cottinham, were you here tonight, or any comments about this intergovernmental agreement between us and the TCSG?
No, sir. Just to remind the board that when we first did, we had a state can't do with one-year lease. So we put one-year lease with an option to renew for two years. Went sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen. And then we had a, the state passed a law last year allowing for a thirty-year lease between the school board and the state on the prayer academy. And so this technically will begin July one, twenty eighteen. We've been under the old one. So it'll be thirty years from July one. And then they'll do another. But it's all, the main thing we've been doing is on the insurance stuff. And that's all been resolved real favorably for the school board.
I noticed you said they'll do another one in thirty years.
I don't know which one.
All right. If there's no questions, we'd like to place out on the consent agenda. The SRO agreement? We have the agreement here that we've been working on between the county and the chair department and school board and our insurance companies. We've been working for quite some time on this also. There is a law that requires us to have a written agreement. So we're asking the board to approve this, so that we're compliant with state law that we have a written agreement between us and the county and the chair department. Our insurance companies have negotiated back and forth on both sides, and everybody's satisfied with this agreement. And once again, thank you, Mr. Cottinham, for your work on this. I know it's been.
How long was this for?
It's five years, but it'll. The term says five years when you adopt it. The progress one of the term.
That's not going to interfere with what we talked about.
No, sir, not with the safety plans. This is exclusively for the two at the high school, the two at the middle school, the one at the ninth grade, one at alternative, and the six that we have on the staff. This will cover them.
And, and if the superintendent through the board and the counter decide to add one, that this automatically will add one.
This basically brings us into compliance with what the state requires. Have a written agreement.
It does, and addresses some things for legal liability purposes. I mean, it's important that, you know, SROs handle law enforcement and school administration handles this. And.
It meets the pleasure of the board. We'll place this on the consent agenda. Addition of transportation. Tool room. We put out a request for proposals for work to do a addition on to the transportation department for a parks room. Mr. Giger, we've been talking about this now for quite some time, and we're excited about getting it done. And you see, we put this out for bid. We had two bids submitted. And you see, those two were requests the board to approve Douglas Meadows deal. Forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. And this will be SPOS funds that will be used to complete this project. If there's no dissent, we will place this on the consent agenda. All right. Next item on the agenda is the add-alternate for the Performing Arts Center for the Black Box Theater. When we originally bid this project, we bid the Black Box Theater is an add-alternate. And the reason we did that was because we weren't sure where the bid was going to come in at. Quite honestly, in the design phase, the architects, the projections, the original projections, it could be a twenty-one million dollar project. So we had them go back to the drawing boards, and we had to cut some pieces off of that Performing Arts Center, took some space off of it, condensed it down, and we got it down to a project that we thought we could afford to build. And so, but if you're in the bid process, you know, when you put it out for a hard bid, you're not sure exactly where that dollar amount's going to come in at. So it came in at ten million five hundred thousand, roughly, which we knew we could do. But we did not accept the add-alternate at that bid opening. And the board did not, we did not ask the board to accept the add-alternate, and the board accepted the bid. Because we had the HVAC work at Colby High School that we were going to go into. We weren't sure how much that would cost us trying to do the HVAC work. We weren't sure about the tool room, how much that would cost us to do the tool room. We weren't sure about the completion of the nickel school. There were some things that might come up. There were some unknowns at that time, so we declined to accept the add-alternate on the Black Box Theater. Now, you might ask, what is a Black Box Theater? I've got Doctor Cummins here. He's worked in a school that had a similar facility. If you can explain what, what would be the added value, Doctor Cummins, on completing the Black Box Theater? And also, I would like to say that the, the, the Black Box Theater is going to be constructed. It's part of the overall performing arts structure. Right now, it's not online to be completed on the interior. They're not going to put in the painting. They're not going to put in the fixtures. They're not going to put in the drapery. They're not going to put in the seating. It would just be a block room unfinished. So we're asking the board to complete the Black Box Theater. And that's what this add-alternate is about. So, Doctor Cummins, do you want to describe what it is?
Thank you, Doctor Lee. The Black Box Theater is an opportunity for our drama program to have a home. Presently, they don't have a home. They're operating out of classrooms, and they're transitioning from one part of the school to the other every day, from the classroom work to the actual theater work on the stage. And obviously, they've been doing that for quite a long time. Band has a place to go. Chorus has a place to go, but drama at the present time doesn't have a place to go. In addition of the Black Box Theater in the auditorium, not only would they have a classroom to go to, but they would not have to transition from their classroom to the main auditorium. So they would not have to turn over those physical facilities every day if they're going to utilize that for performances and rehearsals. The Black Box room will be a much smaller venue, and not only would they use it every day, but they also could use it for some of their performances, because I've been talking to the contractor today, well, superintendent, I think it's anticipated to have between a hundred and twenty-five seats in the Black Box auditorium. So that, that would be something that would be ongoing, and like Doctor Lee said, the footprint is already there. The footprint of the building we walked today is already there. So I think it would be a tremendous opportunity for our drama program. And I think it would certainly, you know, cut down on some utility uses in the main auditorium, because you don't always have to use the main auditorium for every performance.
Because this would be an actual classroom?
Yes, sir. It would be a laboratory. It would be like a chorus room. It would be like the band room. They could utilize, be utilized every day in home for classroom work, but also they could have some of the small performances there.
And, and we're talking about moving toward the academy concept with our strategic plan. We're going to have the Fine Arts Academy. We will use this four periods out of the day as classroom for the Fine Arts Academy. So the Fine Arts Academy, we call this big classroom home. And when we're talking about completing it, and is this add-alternate? Plywood flooring at the stage and the casework would be eighteen thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars. The acoustic wall panels and acoustic panels in the ceiling and the painting of the interior and exterior would be fifteen thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The movable seating would be seventy-five thousand dollars. The mechanicals, the HVAC, fifteen thousand dollars. And then the electrical and the production system, including the sound system, the audiovisual system, all of that would be two hundred thousand dollars, roughly. So that would be the add-alternate. SPOS funds.
We have some SPOS. I thought we were already running for the title of SPOS.
It will be running tight. You're correct.
We'll even be willing to buy some buses next couple of years.
Yes, sir. We will. I think we have, we have buses in that budget, that SPOS budget remaining. We'll be getting some, we'll be getting some bond money from the state.
That's not even a bus, is it? Bond money will buy one bus, yeah.
It'll buy one bus. The bond money will. And then we've also talked, Mr. Giger, about replacing the engines on some buses and using those. And so we'll have money to provide the transportation, yes, sir.
What we're talking about here, we really thought we'd just do it in the next SPOS. We just thought we would. Am I correct in that?
No, sir. No, sir. We never intended to do it in the next.
We were waiting on to the next SPOS on this.
We talked about finishing off, moving the band and the choral rooms to the back end of that building. Remember when that thing came in at like twenty-two million? And we took, we just left the band and chorus where they are.
I'm good, though, if we don't wait a way to transport our students to school.
Yes, sir.
For safety, I agree. And to give, knows what he's got, what he's going to need.
I'm sure, sir.
You going to be needing some new buses in the next couple of years?
Yes, sir.
And we'll get what we need. What I'm going to, I'm going to get.
Yes, sir. Well, we go back to the voters in November of eighteen, the SPOS.
We talked about two years down the road.
Anyone else? Are we moving this to the consent agenda?
No.
But, sir?
I just don't, from our discussion we've had about SPOS, I don't see how we're going to reach there if we might, and I hope we do.
Yes, sir.
The two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen student handbook. We've got the student handbook revisions. They're not up for approval tonight. They're just up for discussion and presentation. Doctor Evans?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Doctor Lee, and the board. You will notice that the handbook has a little different look. We talked to principals about moving away from the three separate handbooks for the great bands and putting everything back into one. In the three separate ones, we had a lot of the same information in all three handbooks. And over the years, the information in the handbook, things had just been added and stuck here and stuck there. And it was not easy to find things, and it, it wasn't organized as well as we thought it could be. So what you see is a compilation of all of the handbooks into this one. And if you look at the table of contents, you will see how the information is organized under different main headings. There's a general school information section. There's a section on student health. There's a section on safety, special programs, instruction, attendance, student conduct, and athletics. So this was done in Google Docs. All of the principals and the key people that work with the handbook at the schools have reviewed it, provided input. We deleted things that they didn't think was necessary in there anymore. And they've all had an opportunity to provide input and review the final product. And it's not final until, we say it's final, so there's still opportunity for revision or additions to it, just presenting.
Do we know what's been deleted? Do we have a copy of what's been taken out?
It's in those little handbooks. But the actual revision history, we, we could pull that.
I just love to see what we leave it out of this.
Some of the, one, one example was the entire promotion-retention policy was in the handbook. And I looked at handbooks from other systems, and it's not a requirement that we have the entire policy in there. So we summarized it and put pertinent information for each band, for elementary, middle, and high school. And some, and some of those board policies have repetitive information in them also. So that took up a lot of pages in the handbook that the schools told us wasn't really necessary. It does reference the full policy, but in that case, the entire. It does reference the full policy, but in that case, the entire policy is no longer in the handbook.
What we talked about doing, Mr. Jowers, was not disturbing the content of the administrative functions of discipline and things of that nature. We didn't want to change the substance of how we administrate discipline and how we deal out consequences for misbehavior and all that. What we tasked, Dr. Evans, we don't change any of that, the way we administrate the schools, but just put it in format that allows us to...
It's just better organized.
Use it. I'm just curious. Did we give them a second? Yeah, we can get, we can get, let's see if we can get the track agenda.
One issue when we originally went for one handbook, multiple handbooks was that there were, there were certain things that may be applied to high school, applied to elementary school. But I'm sitting here looking at this one, and we have broken that out, you know, just like bus incidents, you've got one for high school, you've got one for, you know, so as long as we can get all that stuff like that separated out, I don't see a problem with going back to one handbook and doing like that.
I like the idea. I just...
One thing I didn't say, it will be about this size. And they wanted it to be a bigger book with holes inside so that students could get it in the notebooks.
I thought I did.
So, this will relatively be the size of it.
We will come back to the board at the main meeting with the handbook and have more discussion on it. So, this is just a discussion on where we go. School security, RFP. We have a request with proposal that we have worked up to advertise for security services. I've talked with the CEO at the hospital, and they are currently using private security, armed security at the hospital, provide armed security. We have some schools where we may want to add some armed security. And so, this is an RFP to advertise services to see if there are any private firms, organizations that would be interested in working with our system. I think with the incidents of the last few months in the world, safety is number one, and we're exploring all avenues. And if we put the RFP out, that doesn't necessarily mean we have to accept any of the proposals, but this would give us an idea of what kind of services are out there. We're already working closely with our sheriff's department, our police department. We're putting it into the budget. And we went over in the work session previously, we talked about budgeting funds for security. So, this would give us the opportunity to accept proposals for what kind of security we may open contract with. I've talked to Dr. Banks. Dr. Banks, if you want to update us on where we're at with security right now?
Definitely, everyone. Since the incident in Parkland, probably over two months ago now, safety has been a big concern in many areas within our culture. I would say within our schools here, we have been going through doing active shooter drills, et cetera. We've completed that with all schools, all thirteen, our schools at twelve different sites that we have in Coffee County. I've been working hand in hand with Captain Chris Elrod about safety, about security. And we're looking at having additional officers within our system, hopefully going into the last four to three weeks of school. We want all campuses with an additional officer there, some schools do not have. And also, at this time, but what we do hope to put some, at least one or more there. And I asked Mr. Elrod early this week, and we're hoping that we can have something in place starting this coming Monday. With that being said, we also have had deputies going through every school, walking, getting familiarized with the layout of every school, just in case something negative or something unforeseen takes place within our community. So, I will say the law enforcement, they have been working very hard with school officials to hopefully improve our safety measures right here in Coffee County. You never want to be on the giving side or receiving side of the call that says your child or your husband or your wife did not make it. So, we're doing all we can right now to ensure safety, improve that moving forward. So, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Banks. We appreciate Dr. Banks working with Elrod, Officer Elrod. They've got additional officers out in schools. And when we're going to finish the year, paying through the sheriff's department for additional officers. So, we're working with sheriff's department to have additional officers in schools, but that's a somewhat of a bridge for us for the long term. So, what we're asking the board is with this RFP, we can explore long-term solutions to fund more officers in schools and more, more security in the school. So, immediately, we're getting through the sheriff's department whatever officers they have, if we can pay, and we'll basically have to pay overtime rate for the use of those officers, but we're just going to go ahead and do that for the rest of the school year. But then, long term, this RFP would give us an idea of what kind of services may be out there that we can budget long term for.
Real quick, Dr. Vickers? I'm sorry, I spoke to you earlier this afternoon, and we skipped kind of right past that with the Kenvol. Do you have that information for us? I had asked Dr. Vickers for information in regards to special needs recognition throughout the school year. She got that for the board.
Actually, this was something that was already saved on my computer. I just printed it out to you all.
You don't want to spend it?
I did. Yes, Mr. Preston asked, you know, what type of recognition we do for students with disabilities. And four or five years ago, we started something. And when you just back out and say, a lot of schools already recognize a lot of our students. They get various awards, but many times students with disabilities face very large challenges. So, they typically may not get on a roll or highest average in particular subject. But they have worked really, really hard on their IP goals. So, we wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to be recognized this way. And so, these were the guidelines that we had come up with. And again, we've been doing this for four or five years. And we purchase actually medallions, and I brought one just to show you. A lot of the schools, you know, automatically have these for theirs and you can pass that around. We put a little something on the back. And we want our students to be recognized for their accomplishments, but we also don't want them to be discriminated against by identifying them as a student with a disability. So, we try to do this very carefully. And as you can see, on that award, we don't name it as anything, and the principal is still the one to actually award on those positions. And in addition to that, our high school seniors have an opportunity to also get some honors. We partner with High School High Tech, which is a program through vocational rehabilitation. And through that, some of our seniors had an opportunity to fill out some paperwork and application and actually have a chance to win a computer. And we actually had, I think, three that have been selected with that honor. Another thing that we do through our local GLRS that's out of Laycross, we identify a, basically a star student that's a senior, and they get recognized. Each of our eight districts go together and we recognize those eight seniors in a luncheon. And then, from that, one of those eight is selected and their information is sent to the state. And then, the state recognizes select seniors as well. So, we do have, you know, things going on. I just wanted to make you aware of that. Any particular questions or other things, Mr. Preston?
Not this time. I mean, thank you for this stuff.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Appreciate what you do.
I need that award back.
All right. I'll tell you this, if you've never been to Kayla Day, you need to get a question.
Ms. Vickers?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Special needs students. The elementary schools, where are most of those located?
Well, the...
Pretty well evened out, countywide?
The smaller elementary schools, the outline schools primarily, have the students that they conserve through the inclusion model, where we provide support inside the classroom. If we have students that require more services from that for elementary age, they do come to the three inner city schools just because it's easier to pull them together and have a teacher to provide services for eight or ten children versus two children at one location or three at another.
We have one particular school that's got a lot more than the other schools or a lot...
Actually, kind of varies from time to time, just based on caseloads and kids that come through. We do have specific programs located at specific schools, and that's based on student needs, and for the same reasons, so that we're not identifying certain kids at certain locations that we have to have a teacher that travels or anything. It's just easier to have them at one location. A part of that is based on the size of the school and the classroom space that's available. So, a lot goes into those decisions as to where, you know, devices are located. We get with Dr. Lee and Dr. Banks, you know, as far as looking at classroom space and utilizing that. And that, with transportation, has to help us a lot too.
And that is all we have for tonight. A good meeting, a long meeting.
Well, it's just...
Yes, sir. Do we have any audience participation this night? All right, so there's no audience participation. At this time, I would ask the board that we move to the second session.
From the workspace.
Do we have time? We're just going to second play.
I think they made it from the second play.
Yeah.
Second play.
All right.
No, we're actually...
Yeah. Work session's a jerk. Back to center.